Call this meeting to order, Ms. Thomas, would you do roll call, please?
Mayor Walker.
President.
Vice Mayor McGill. I was called today that, told that she would not be here for an emergency. Counselor Hill.
I'm here.
Counselor Payne. Counselor Snook.
Here.
All right, thank you. Today for this 4:00 PM work session, we will have a discussion, when report and discussion on three items. The first up is the governance related to the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund.
Good evening, good afternoon, everyone. Listen, are we pulling up the PowerPoint?
It's LaShine, yeah, I can pull it up for you.
Okay, so what I intended to do in this portion of this conversation, and I'm indulging in asking that we'll go back to when you all considered the Affordable Housing Plan and provide a little more detail in regards to actions for staff. What I wanted to do today was primarily go over the governance item as it related to the CAF committee. So the group that will determine requests for funding, as well as if you wanted to go into the governance conversation about the CAF structure. If I didn't plan that as well, so that we, as staff, are given the direction that we need to take to be able to realize the tenants of this particular plan. But to kick that off, I wanted to just remind everybody of where we are, in that we have re-titled the Office of Housing and Redevelopment, the Office of Community Solutions. That team will focus on affordable housing programs, commercial revitalization and development activities, and neighborhood constituent services. That last being an item that is a little across the board, all over the place, not really organized in any way. And my desire would be to bring some organization to that, some consistency to that, and to be able to have a clear place that if a resident were working on a matter and they just didn't feel like they knew who they could talk to, they could always reach out to this particular team. And that team being made up of Alex Ikafuna, who is the interim director, Brenda Kelly, redevelopment manager, and Erin Atack, grants coordinator. And I pull all this together with that last bullet highlighting there more capacity is needed. We have a number of ways that we can go and a lot of work that can be done. And as the Affordable Housing Plan identified, there's definitely more work to be done. So just to have that conversation about where else we can go is what I intend to bring forward in future conversations. Next slide, please. This is an example of where that capacity could go, and just taking a look at where we are and the work that is to be done. And there's a number of positions that could be created, not suggesting that we need to do all of these things at one time, but just to kind of give you a peek into what's in my head and how I have looked at this particular area of our work. Someone that can take a look at the return on the investment. As you all know, we are going to be receiving a report from HRNA at the end of the month, on the 20th, at the next council meeting. They'll be providing for us a snapshot of the work that they've been doing to provide some analysis, some significant analysis of funding relationships that we have invested in, and then what the returns of those investments have been. We are definitely feeling as though we're going to learn a lot, a lot of improvements that will need to result from that particular report, and then to be able to go in and really make those things happen. Someone who has specialty in low income tax credits, new markets tax credit, and just investment in general, it'd be nice to have on the team to be able to look at what the proposals are suggesting can be done. Are they really doing those things, and how could we move our needle? Someone to inspect projects, just to make sure that they are happening as we determine that we wanted them to, as we contracted them to, and more or less just make sure that everyone is meeting expectations. Someone to deal with the finances of all this, as we are able to bring additional resources to the table. I think there is some opportunity for us to bring more money to, to the city to help us do more affordable housing work. And as we bring more in, there will be a need for someone to specialize in being able to determine how that money comes and goes. Neighborhood ambassadors would be really taking that third bullet and figuring out ways that we can make improvements to our interactions with the community at large. That suggestion would be that these would be individuals who'd be assigned to neighborhoods and will be available to them directly. And then we would be able to make sure that they're always heard. And then looking at contracts and just community planning in general are all areas that we could grow. Next slide. So to look at the Affordable Housing Fund specifically, these are the items, these are the tenants of the plan as presented, you all adopted. The highlighted, highlighted items being reforming the structure and function of the Housing Advisory Committee, create and empower a separate CAF committee to set priorities and distribution of the funds, realign priorities, increase capacity and empower staff, and establish clear, transparent competitive CAF process. Guess where we are at this time is that we're ready to act. We just felt as though we need further guidance from, from council on how we should proceed. The adoption of the plan suggests that we'll reduce the number of seats from 21 to between 10 and 15. I think we should have some discussion on what is the right number, as well as them all being appointed by council. So the question is, do we start to announce this, take applications, and start to field a, a group to become this newly organized body? We've identified, you've identified in accepting this as two-year terms, max four-term eligibility. One of the questions would be in regards to those who make up the Housing Advisory Committee today, how do we transition folks off, that then we will replace them with others as we meet other priorities set in the makeup of the structure? With that last, that next item being increasing our BIPOC representation so that we have all voices included in these ongoing conversations. So how do we get seats that are currently occupied, not occupied, so they can be replaced by Black Indigenous and people of color to realize what it is that we prioritize in having a wider voice, as well as providing spaces available for housing program beneficiaries and subsidized housing residents? These are all items that are in the plan, and I guess we're looking for some direction through your discussion on how you would like to see that to proceed. There was reference to giving regional representatives some voting power. I'm very curious about that specifically in regards to how you envision that happening. At this time, everything regarding the CAF is internal to the city. So I guess we're looking to see if we're thinking we want to go beyond that, or do we just want advisory suggestions from those that are outside the city to help us more or less align what we're doing in the city with what it may be happening in the county and elsewhere? And then the natural item that I feel like we can easily deliver on is developing onboarding process. Once we get some questions answered, then we'll be able to take a look at what an onboarding process would consist of. Next slide. And then just to fill you in on where we are today, based on HRNA during their reporting work, we're waiting for that report to come in to allow it to influence the next round. We anticipate being able to have the packet revised with some early improvements that we'd like to release and have that go out in January, and then give 30-day period, of course, to have applicants submit their requests for funding, and then we'll get our responses back to them in a period shortly after. If we could go back one slide and just leave it on that page and just kind of have some discussions, I guess is what we're more or less looking for at this time from councils. What, what guidance would you like to offer to us in taking the next step so that we are ready to begin moving forward, reconstituting the CAF?
Well, I would like to start with the regional representation with voting powers. Explain where that's coming from, because I know in here, it talked about regional collaboration, but I don't know unless there's a funding pot, a regional funding pot, which is what this was talking about. The regional, Michael, and I think you're still on that, right, the regional housing partnership?
Yes, and they, they just got a grant to have a little bit of money, but they don't have like a steady funding pot.
Okay, all right. So I just, I don't know if our internal dollars, just like we don't vote on their internal dollars, that, that they should have a seat here. But expanding, go ahead, someone. Okay, but if whatever comes out of the regional housing partnership, and once those things start building, and if they are cap funds that we feel should be utilized for those projects and transferred, then I think that's a better way, but just giving them a seat on what we're doing now and here, that doesn't seem like that's, that we should do that.
I, I have a related and perhaps even more basic question. I'm just curious what, what we think is meant by regional representatives. I mean, who, who are we thinking about here?
I wouldn't say that I know that, it's just a recommended change from the governance section of the hack from the Affordable Housing Plan. That's one of the items that are there. I think it more or less falls in line with what Mayor Walker and Council Payne was just saying, that regional is probably an attempt to align what we're doing in the city with what's happening in the county, but that it's not necessarily specific to a need to act right now. I don't think that's what I've heard.
Historically speaking, we have had both a UVA representative on the hack. I can't speak to what the attendance has been like from some of those representatives, but also we had a county representative in, you know, the form of someone who was the housing person on the county side. Again, I'm not clear on how much that participation has happened, as is when I was on, on the Housing Advisory Committee. And, and so like, I totally agree, I don't think that, that from a voting perspective, that it doesn't seem clear, but I do think their ultimate goal should get to a more regional, like, like the regional housing partnership is. I think that's our goal is to get to that, and so we're looking at this thing much more holistically than just the city. But I also agree with what the mayor was saying around, the dollars just can't be coming from one source. We have to get to a place where everyone's really contributing to that pot, and we're looking at these things across the region, which we're not there yet.
So if someone, like Counselor Payne's current position, comes to the city and at some point say, this is where we are in this process, and this is where, what we think these funds should be utilized for at this time, then I think that's what brings in that regional approach, because they would have come up with something that could utilize dollars versus what the hack is supposed to do, or what we are hoping it does in city limits at this point. And I don't think that we should have other entities voting on if, you know, what happens with the dollars, and there's enough, there are enough individuals in the city who are doing work in the city to take up these slots, because I'm sure that's already gonna, we are already reducing potentially, and so that's already gonna, you know, present some challenges.
And for the hack, it's not really related to the money allocation, but at the same time, it is related to policies. So I think the same still holds true, and then we look at the CAF committee where the reference, pursuing regional priorities. Yeah, I definitely see that that's something that should be done, and we're at a point where we can bring our dollars towards something bigger. It's a more regional in scope.
So are the UVA representatives currently active on that?
I'm sorry, I broke up. What did you just say?
Are those community, the UVA representative and the county representative, do they currently participate?
They do. I think what we're trying to figure out at this moment is, are, I guess, what I, what I've heard is that to participate on the hack is one thing, to participate on the CAF committee is altogether different. Participating on the CAF committee would be if there was a consideration of more than just city funds that were being dispersed.
Yeah, and I think with the reduction of those members, and I see the regional representation here, but I think if we have a liaison between the, that sits on both the hack and the RHP, I think that's it. If there is someone on both, there should be someone who can take those messages back.
Okay, that's fair. I, I understand that, and I agree with that as well. Okay, so I think if we, if we go with, looking at the hack itself, and the number of seats from reducing from 21 to 10 to 15, I think we need to determine what's the right number of that spread so that we can then determine how to take appropriate action for affecting that change.
Don't we first need to agree on what the hack is going to do? Is it going to do the same thing it's always been doing, or are we thinking it's going to do something different? There are the group of specific items listed on page 72 of the Affordable Housing Plan. Are, are we thinking that that's, that's the list of tasks we want to give to the hack?
I think that's, that's the way I'm looking at it, from assuming that when you all adopted the plan, that that's what the agreement was for you. So at this moment, for me, I'm looking at it as these are the marching orders that we have until you give us something different.
Well, in all candor, we didn't, we didn't spend, I don't think we spent 30 seconds on that particular page, and certainly not on that paragraph. So I, I don't know whether we're necessarily wedded to, to the, the things in that paragraph. I understand why you, as the, as the person trying to implement what council has said, would, would regard that as the starting point. I'm just not sure that we have, have spent very much time trying to determine that that is, in fact, what exactly we want the, the hack to do.
I guess what I will offer for you as one key takeaway that I have desired for this conversation, because we'll talk about home CDBG task force next, but is to ensure that you all gain an appreciation for the expertise that is provided by staff, in that we are not deferring decision-making power outside of the building. When we are in, in the building capable of really, really figuring out what's the right approach to take on the resources being dispersed and how best they can be managed, because we are taking into consideration past experience, past performance, and then aligning that with the consolidated plan priorities that come from HUD in other ways, as well as what we consider the conversations to be among council and, and staff. So I guess the question is more about what is it that you need the hack to do? It's probably the question that I will pose back to you, Counselor Snook and others, would be even thinking about what your experiences have been to date, where they performed as you would like them to, and where maybe not. I think that's what we could try to settle on.
And I think that, oh, go ahead, Lloyd, did you have a comment there?
Well, I, I was raising my hand just frankly to scratch my head, but I guess, you know, I'm, I'm not familiar enough with how decisions and policy recommendations on housing matters either have been made or should be made. We don't have a housing coordinator at the moment, as I understand it. And it was never quite clear to me where the line of authority lay, or lines of authority lay in city council, in city hall, over, over some of these matters. So I'm, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, out of, out of the different players. I mean, obviously, we've got city staff, we've got the CAF committee being recommended, we've got the Housing Advisory Committee. I, I guess I, I just wanted to try to figure out how that, that whole package is going to fit together. And I'm really just kind of wondering whether the Housing Advisory Committee has specific tasks or just being told, hey, you're kind of in charge of housing, go do housing stuff, which is frankly what this list kind of reads like. And I just wondered if there are specific things that we, that we want to empower the Housing Advisory Committee to be doing, or whether this, this very broad list of, you know, advise on existing housing priorities kind of language, whether we're, that's just sufficient to say, you know, we'll tell you later what we want in the meantime, do housing stuff.
I'll just speak historically. This is not in the last two years, I'll be honest, because of, I think during the pandemic, it's just been less so. But historically, the hack would bring forward policy proposals. I'll be honest, the two years I served on the hack, I jumped on there because I had watched how often kind of staff and the committee were kind of in conflict with each other, with the hopes that we could all get onto the same page. And so I, I would love, Sam, for you to kind of just provide, given, I mean, I know that we're going to have some other conversation around CBD, CDBG. What, what do you see as the most effective and efficient way for us to, A, leverage these outside resources in the community, but also recognize the role that staff must play? And as Lloyd said, we, we know we're still downstaffed in order to really be, you know, meeting all of these needs, but I'm just trying to sense from where you're coming from, and where you see that kind of relationship evolving between staff and such a committee, or if that committee would sunset if we have the right staff.
Sure. So what, what I can tell you is, I guess I'll start with just being the new guy who has been building perspective now since July. When I first arrived and, and had done some, some preliminary work in advance and watched meetings and all, and thought I understood a little more than I did, and staff can tell you that, as I've been working with this particular team, they've heard me consistently say, wait, we do what? I've done that a few times, and I, then I've had to say that again one more time, make sure that I'm hearing that correctly. When I process what I think is the right approach, is that a Housing Advisory Committee is just that, they're advising. They are providing information to inform whichever entity or group of individuals have the real authority to take whatever action. They're providing information, informed information, informing them of, of things and providing a perspective that can be utilized to reach a decision. That in no way means that they take action that is policy, are forming the next steps and actions that take, are, are to be taken, but they are more or less just considering, well, if you do this, this may be unintended consequence. If you do this, this may be the result, and you might not necessarily appreciate that. It is respecting their expertise and their perspective for being in the conversation, but the key capacity concern is that they cannot influence outcomes that might impact them and their organizations directly. So that's why advisory being in the name means a lot. So to have an external group of individuals who are willing to come together and tackle housing issues in a market such as this, that is very complicated, is the best thing that we could ever hope for, because we just don't have the staff to tackle it ourselves. So to have an advisory committee of individuals who are willing to come in and talk about inclusionary zoning and various tools and resources that can be utilized to make these things more equitable and attainable for people is exactly what we should be doing. But that advisory committee is, again, should, they should, there shouldn't be tension with staff. And, and I've heard that as well, and, and that means it's not working if it comes down to that. There should be a cooperative and collaborative relationship that exists between the members of the Housing Advisory Committee and staff. Because one thing that everyone has to remember is the staff for the city government is here to protect the interests of the city government. And if there are resources that are theirs, it is their responsibility to steward those resources for the public good. And they are meeting objectives and working to achieve outcomes that are important, that have been set mostly by the city council, but sometimes by outside forces like HUD and any other funding source. So we have to be able to balance all of that, and for balancing all of that, sometimes what we hear when the local conversation may not necessarily be what we want to hear. And we can't disregard that particular part of the conversation if the governing body is telling us we must do this, and you must meet this guideline, or you must meet this test. So you've got to be able to work through that, and that's where you need as much of a cooperative relationship as you can get on the local level. I think when I look at the role on page 72, when I, when I read that, and I've read all of this three or four times, I don't have a problem with the role being considering although that laundry list of items there, it is not taking action. So if it is to help consider how this will work in Charlottesville, what is it about our market that means we need to do something a little bit different regarding this particular concept? I think the hack can provide that information, that perspective. And then that information should be able to come back in, be processed along with staff recommendation, and therefore come to you as the council with the recommendation from staff and the feedback from the advisory body. I think that would be ideal as to how it should work.
Is it your sense that this group would be working primarily with the, the housing, have housing coordinator, whatever type of, we're going to give the person, and that that person would basically be, you know, I'm trying to think of an analogy, would be to the Housing Advisory Committee, like the head of NDS would be to the Planning Commission, for example, in terms of being the, the person who's in charge of translating councils' sort of broad policy statements into getting meaningful advice from the hack?
Right. I would definitely see it as that. That would be my preference, that we would probably, and, and I guess part of what I'm kind of forecasting is that I'm looking at that housing coordinator role as one that needs to be expanded. It needs to be elevated so that it can be, can perform to that degree. But they would have that expertise to be able to engage with the members of the hack, and there not be any consideration of if they know what they're talking about, or
Right.
an inability to actually process a particular concept here or there that they, as a practitioner, may already know about.
The only other thought I had, sort of as a broad matter, is that it, it kind of feels like by the time we add, you know, all of the people we want to add in, at the same time that we're trying to say we're going to cut down on the number of people on the committee, there's, there's going to be a real crunch, but on page 72, there's at least an attempt to break it out to say two or three of each of these five categories. And I guess that, that provides a, a meaningful way to, to think about who we would, who we would appoint.
Sure. And I, I'll give you just an example of, of her reference to that. When we have a Lytec deal that's being considered, that we actually need members on this committee to understand Lytec deals in order to consider them. I don't necessarily agree with that. I think we can ensure that the basic information is available in regards to what is the ultimate outcome, the schedule, the cost, and, and the income bracket that we're actually going to reach. I think those are the most important factors in that particular situation. My desire would be that I will have a, a staff member and build additional capacity in existing staff that we can consider the merits of the Lytec deal and understand that there's no gaping hole or anything that regards to how this particular, this project is going to particularly perform.
So, so what is your sense of, of what the staff would be that would be needed? You're talking about expanding the role of the housing coordinator and all these various other functions that you were looking to try to add in. It, it looks like very quickly we end up with a, you know, like four or five additional FTEs.
Yeah, we, I mean, we could very easily be inside of a small department, but I'm not suggesting that we're ready to go there yet. I'm really, I'm willing to walk slowly to get us progress. I think the housing coordinator role, why I have not rushed to try to put it out there to fill it, is because I wanted to get clarity on this conversation specifically, so that I understood who I'm looking for and what I'm going to need them to be able to do, and what skill sets I'm going to need them to be able to bring to the table. Ideally, what I imagine is that that position would be at a higher, definitely at a, a higher pay level, and, and that skill set would be there. And then from that person coming in would be how I would determine the other capacity items that I listed for you in the beginning, on which ones are priority over others, because depending on who that candidate is, they might be able to do some of those things too rarely.
Right. And the finance person might also be a, a Lytec person or something like that.
Sure, and, and that particular, that position is probably more far off, actually, because it would take more money coming in. I understand at one time, we had a county allocation of funds along with our city allocation. If we were to go back down that road and were able to, to do that in a more regional way, because there will be so much more money in this conversation, there might be a need for somebody like that. It's why I identified that as a potential capacity issue.
And I, I like what, so how advisory groups should work here? I understand probably what's happening here a little bit, based on the past. I remember a couple of years ago when we received a proposal. Staff wanted to present one proposal, hack members wanted staff to present a proposal. I thought we should give both proposals, and that no one should be slicing and dicing them up without us getting all the information. But ultimately, those, that proposal was, what staff wanted to submit was changed. And I just think if, if we could have figured out that collaboration better, where we were getting all the information versus selected information. And so thinking of just that scenario, I wouldn't have wanted to I wouldn't have wanted the group to not be able to present that information, just like I don't think staff should not be able to present their information. And counselors should be able to ask questions on all of it to get at the point, you know, where they are asking staff questions about it to dictate the direction that we're going. So I don't want to head down a direction where it's only staff is making the decision either. And I also don't want to head down a position where staff don't feel like there's really any use for them because other people have been dictating outcomes. And I don't know, it seemed like it should be simple, that there should be a better way. But so I'm hoping that there, that there is. Just thinking of the li-tech conversation, I know from being on the CRHA board and the redevelopment committee, that is, it's a lot of information and it's a lot of expertise for one person. So is that a situation where? I think if there is community expertise, that's good. But is this a situation where the potential in the future employee would be helping to ensure? Because I know the attorney's office, let's just go with CRHA project, the attorney office had some reservations about that contract, which I think from the history and even with PHA that there were, there should have been the same reservations for both contracts in terms of what the issues that they were bringing up. So are you saying just in a case like that, that there would just be experts on staff to make sure that those contracts are, that the city is clear on the position that it's getting involved in? Or are you saying that that individual will potentially help these organizations make sure they are doing the best job possible?
It could be a combination. I lean more towards the first being the lead aspect of it. That depending on, depending on what we really communicate to the Housing Advisory Committee, because I want to be fair to them and make sure that they clearly understand what their responsibility is. So that from that going forward, the spirit of collaboration begins with an understanding of that. So as long as they understand what their responsibilities are, we will work with them to deliver what needs to be delivered. I'll take that particular moment, and while it should have been simple that you could have had differing opinions, I would never have resisted sharing that there was a difference of opinion, and I would have shared that other opinion as well. If I believed in one over the other, you just would have heard me strongly advocating for one over the other because I felt strongly about it. But I, and I think there's, there's room for us to be able to present, there's another alternative. We may not necessarily agree with the alternative, but here it is. But if we're able to get the person, the kind of person that I would like to see in this particular capacity, they would, in my mind, do the work that we don't necessarily want to force on the community to have to understand a li-tech deal and go through so much training and review of each individual packet to try to understand what this is for having not been doing it for a long time. They would be able to trust that their interactions with this person could produce the information that they need it to be able to consider it on its merit. I think if we can make sure that people receive enough information to understand that this deal on this site to do this number of units, and it's going to deliver at this cost by this date to reach people at thirty percent AMI, fifty percent AMI, whatever it may be. I think that is sufficient for them to be able to understand if this is a good deal or not because part of the packaging that goes around it is we should also be telling them this project is capable of helping us achieve thirty percent of the number of units that we prioritize for this fiscal year. And they can use all of that information to make that decision. If we're not able to tie that particular project to the overarching goal that we're attempting to achieve, then they don't have the information that they need, and I could give them the li-tech packet and blow their minds with a whole bunch of numbers and charts and things like that, and they still don't know what's going on. So I don't think it's fair to them to overwhelm them with too much information. If they're interested, we can, you know, give them access to learning more. But I don't need that to be able to get the community input that I value in this particular scenario to help me evaluate and determine if this is the right project for me to say yes to.
Okay. So since Heather and Michael have both spent considerable time on the hack, in terms of the role of the Housing Advisory Committee, do you all see anything that's missing from that definition? Are you all comfortable with us moving forward? Which was part of Lloyd's question.
Yes. I would say largely, I guess, you know, just my two senses, I would see they, they provide some value added in terms of generating policy ideas and proposals. And I think, you know, we can point to several positive changes and new policies that have been enacted that started from hack. And having them continue that role of being something that can help generate affordable housing policy ideas. I think that's important. Where I've seen the gap is just when generating a lot of those ideas, being able to get on the same page of city staff in terms of, okay, this may be a great idea, but let's identify the staff resources, staff positions, and money needed to make it happen. And then just begin to plan out, you know, how we're going to actually make it happen, given that. And I would see that being like the big, a big gap there. And I guess I would also hope, you know, maybe they can help staff, you know, with the conclusion of the study that we're getting on the twentieth to help more permanently track and evaluate where we're succeeding and failing in our affordable housing investments, even just in terms of how long are these properties being kept affordable? Is there any actual enforcement happening to ensure that, you know, what we want it to happen is actually happening on the ground and stuff like that?
And I would say my, my observations are consistent with, with Michael's during my time on there. And I think there certainly is a big emphasis now as Sam was kind of laying out this role. I can see there being value depending on the skill set this person could bring in. It just elevating that to like a, you know, manager level or something like that, just so that the seat at the table feels balanced because there certainly were times where I just, I feel like the collaboration had more opportunity than was allowed to be had. And so I, again, I just, I agree with what's laid out here, but also with the points that, that Michael has made, given the time I was on there.
And I will, I'll add just to another point to what I heard Council Payne say. I mean, when it comes to the analysis and the, and the compliance aspect of it, it's hard to share that outside the building because that responsibility really rests with staff in that that's really what their mission is and charged to do. If we're going to receive funds, we need to put it out in a responsible way. But we also then need to be able to confirm that it's being utilized the way that it should. I recognize that there's a need for consistent procedures and processes that we need to follow. And I'm planning to dig into that a little bit more and want to see that collaborative among the team. And then we will take those items to the hack. But I don't believe that we should be expected to take it to the hack for them to endorse their own compliance. That doesn't necessarily work. We can take it to them and share with them that compliance is coming. This is what we plan to do. This is why we plan to do it, when we plan to roll it out. But I don't know that we necessarily can always afford to get their endorsement of it because they just might not agree. I think what we can do in those moments is look for where there may be dissension and bring that back to you as the council, wherever it matters, at a higher level for how we're performing the work and see if it's something that you wanted to weigh in and in a way of providing more direction.
I wouldn't disagree with that. I guess, you know, what I'm thinking of is, one, just acknowledging, you know, we, we, I don't think have been tracking our affordable housing investments as closely as we need to at all. And I guess I'm just thinking, you know, if there's any possible value added or enforcing compliance in a lot of areas for that matter. But for the hack, I'm thinking more if there could be any value added in terms of tracking things like, we have a goal of producing this many affordable housing units at these AMI levels. Where are we on getting closer to that goal? Where have our investments not been as impactful as possible in terms of getting us closer to our goals and sort of just measuring? Where are we succeeding? Where are we failing? If that can be done all in-house, great, but I could see potentially being there some value from the hack on that.
And we also have to think about, like, there are ways that we invest in housing initiative outside of the CAF. And so I've always kind of tried to push for how do we look at all of this more holistically? And obviously, many of us have talked about just across the organization, how are we, how are we measuring these things? And what, you know, as we think about the vibrant communities funds, we have the CAF, we have CBDG. You know, what is more that streamlined approach specifically for housing that we can take to ensure, you know, we're not in a case where there's the same organization applying for dollars five different ways. And we're not really effectively tracking it. And I know staff has done their best to kind of, kind of piecemeal that together. But there certainly have been cases where we've been looking at allocations. And I'm like, we didn't, we already allocate funding to that organization under this other program? And how do we know what, across the board, these organizations are receiving and the accountability for that? So that's just another area that, as we look at this, I just think it's much bigger than the CAF. Obviously with our CIP as well, we think about some of the bigger allocations we've made for Friendship Core and for public housing. Those things are outside of that CAF process. That was certainly a much broader discussion, obviously for some very sizable initiatives as well.
Yeah, I would definitely agree with that. I think, I think it's urgent that we develop the internal ability to manage understanding of how we have all these different resources going out for housing. Think the fact that I walked in at the time that we were doing this HRNA contract is kind of reminded me of that. And that's where we've been talking internally about with this and whatever recommendations they make to us as a part of that report, we will immediately start working on it because we should be able to track every dollar that we, as the city government, put into affordable housing and track the outcomes of it, regardless of if it is to produce a new unit or just to preserve affordability for someone. We should be able to track that all the way down to the deepest level, and I'd love to be able to see that. So I feel like that's part of where our capacity needs are clear to me.
And another thought, which is a little bit of a tangent, but you know, with that in mind, you know, knowing that, you know, we're going to be implementing some kind of inclusionary zoning, hopefully. That's great, but how are we going to actually track that? Those units are being rented at the levels that inclusionary zoning has set. And I don't know how that tracking is, is currently going and what we would need to ensure that inclusionary zoning is actually, you know, being followed and getting the outcome we want.
I think that may go back to the ROI analyst. And my note that I have here is doing, you know, that part of the presentation was the, we approved the Office of Performance Management and the, you know, solutions and management position for starting July. And so that person, what, you know, when I was discussing it, we were talking about both vibrant communities. That's was the start, but also looking the poss, you know, that this individual could work with what we're doing with CAF dollars and things like that. And that could be the starting point for how that office gets off the ground. So it seems like, I don't know if Sam, you're thinking that that just, that, that those two things could merge because there were conversations around this being in budget. But I just think that's a possibility for, you know, us, you know, to consider for that funding. But whether we started with this or Bavern Communities Fund, which I think is necessary and needed to, just if we start it somewhere and get that person, and then we can figure out how many staff members we need to add and what an office looks like. But I think adding a person would be very helpful to starting us tracking where monies are going, period.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I, I had that thought too when I took a look at that proposal for the Office of Measurement, Performance and Measurement too, and thought that that would be an area that this particular aspect of work could get done. And that's part of why I'm, I'm not sure I'm, I know exactly when we will be ready to have an ROI person just to look at CAF dollars, home CDBG dollars. But if we could, you know, combine them with looking at vibrant communities, that does make sense to me. And it begins to give us the ability to put in place whatever our internal mechanics need to be for tracking. Because they, we're doing some stuff, but to be perfectly fair to those that are doing it, they're doing the best that they can, but what we have, we haven't necessarily slowed down enough to figure out what, what's missing. And I'm ready to begin to do that because I think this report is going to inspire us to do it.
Okay. So council, do, well, we need to do anything different for you to be able to modify that job description in any way that you see fit and use those funds?
I don't think so. I mean, I, I know that if Chrissy were here, she probably would tell me, yes, I need to do something. But no, I think I'm fine. I'll, I can figure out how to, how to navigate that particular process. If that's what we want to prioritize is where I need to go, I'm ready to do it. Because I feel like the report from HRNA is going to be interesting. And it is going to be eye-opening for us because while we've been very generous in releasing dollars, we have not been as responsible as we need to be in tracking those dollars to the outcome we desire when we let them go. Have to own that and then move on from it.
So in terms of membership, I asked this question before of why a counselor was removed, so I'm going to advocate for that again. I still think that a counselor should be on, you know, a part of the membership. And so if we did three for every category, for the first one, two, three, four categories, the regional representatives, if there's a desire to keep the UVA and county representatives on here, then that would just be two. And then add a counselor, so that would be thirteen individuals. Is there any thoughts there?
I will share that I don't have any objection to a counselor member serving, council member serving. I think that would be helpful because it also would allow that person to help staff carry the conversation forward from your perspective.
The only comment I was going to make is, having sat on a lot of these things over the last few years, I just, I do feel like sometimes less is more. And as I, in my time on the hack, it just seemed like sometimes when there was a smaller, really deep group discussions, they just made more progress. And I found the current format pretty unmanageable, just in terms of have, you know, people really being able to contribute meaningfully. So I just, I generally prefer that we can try to keep these types of groups as, as manageable and small as possible, but I'd like to max out at twelve if we could.
So do?
Well, if I, let me ask this, let me ask this question in regards to the county and UVA representatives. Do we need them on the advisory committee as much as do just needing to have conversations with them about what's happening in all three areas like we do in so many other ways with transportation and other things?
I think from my meeting, well, Michael, you may can answer this better, but from the being on the PDC and what the Regional Housing Partnership is supposed to do, which was established, you know, just a few years ago, I think that committee should be able to do that work. And as always, these meetings are open to the public. So those representatives can comment if there's something that they, you know, need to do. I think maybe the work that UVA is doing, saying that they are going to do with affordable housing, maybe a UVA representative remaining on there. But again, I just think this should be being done with the hack. And if there's a need to reconfigure the group at some point, that can always come back before, before a council.
I guess my, my initial thought would be the most valuable thing is just having those regular communication and strong relationship between the city and the regional partners and UVA. If, I don't know if the hack is the best way to do it. I guess my initial thought is there may be other avenues. And I would think the most important thing is ensuring collaboration on like specific projects, like UVA's proposal to build, you know, a number of affordable housing units, the hotel at twenty-nine to provide housing for homeless individuals in our community and things like that. And I would also agree that, you know, I think it would make sense to really think about the regional, regional housing partnership being a body that we can really being a body that we can really um, take advantage of more. Because I know they're really looking to strengthen, continue to strengthen. And they've gotten a grant money to do some projects. I think they have some capacity building grants and have discussed, you know, stronger connection with local governments throughout the region. And I think that may be an existing body in terms of regional representation that may be the, already there and in the best fit to, to lean into that rather than trying to do that through hack. If that makes sense.
And, and I would suggest that we could always invite them in without voting power. And they can be advisory to the advisor body. I mean, there's nothing wrong with that either, so that they can provide an update on UVA's priorities as well as county priorities. And then they can participate in the work with the perspective that they have, but I think that's fine.
Another consideration is if you look at some of this membership, you know, the housing providers, real estate professionals. I mean, most, a lot of those people are serving this region, not serving just the city. And so you're going to get some of that perspective just by nature of, of the work that they do, which isn't bound by the city.
So for voting purposes, doesn't it have to be an odd number?
Well, you always want to, to break a tie.
So.
I mean, the county has even number of supervisors, but.
The reality is that there are very few of these votes that actually come down to a five to four, eight to seven. Most of them are by, by consensus, so.
So are you, so Heather, back to your thought, so we can, because we do have two other items. Are you saying to keep it at, because my map was all wrong in the first place, because I scratched that last category out. And I did the last two. So I think that if we do two for the, I would say that we do three for the first category, the affordable housing providers, um, which I do have a question that was earlier in the document about the two-year term limits and two-year terms and four-term limits. So I just want to highlight that because it, it's not likely that those partners will change. So do you want to do three first category, two for the real estate professionals, lenders, developers, two for at-large community members? I would recommend three for the affordable housing residents and then one counselor.
That works for me.
One of the thoughts that was somewhere floating around here was uh, that perhaps the category that you've, maybe if I'm, if I'm thinking about what you're saying correctly, the two or three affordable housing residents could include people who are on Section Eight vouchers. Is that, was, was that one of the thoughts that had been floated?
Yeah, I would think that that could mean that.
Okay. I'm not sure what beneficiaries adds that.
I didn't write it.
Yeah, I know.
So Sam, does that work for you?
It does. It does. I think that's, that's fine. I can.
So that would be eleven?
Yes. And then, and then I guess for the, the committee that would actually review funding proposals and, and make those recommendations, um, how would you see, because that makeup would come from this group? I would imagine. Or we, or were you even thinking of that possibly being an altogether different group?
Why at the, oh, go ahead.
No, I just was confused because like, I do see that the first category is affordable housing providers. And as we've done this in the past, that's where there has been a conflict. And so in the past, like we had a subcommittee that would look at the CAF stuff. And it was, if anyone had any ties to anyone application, who's applying for those funds, they couldn't be on it. And so I think just that category itself could be problematic um, for being on a board that's going to ultimately determine how funds are going to be allocated. Just, I'm just putting that out there.
I'll put out there that I've never actually been able to be on a committee that could have determined my result or anyone who I might have a relationship with, but just saying.
I think it's, the whole point was, was wanting to separate this out. And again, the hack did it before with the subcommittee, but it still had, there was not, that the trust wasn't there with the community. There still seemed to be an issue of transparency. And so um, the composition of this, I think, needs to be looked at as a resolve of that.
So we changed that to the Affordable Housing Residence Beneficiary, three city staff. I think again, a counselor should be here and then we can do two or the three at-large community members?
So you don't want anybody over from the hack that maybe not have the conflict?
Right.
I'm saying, is that what you're saying, Nikia?
Yeah, I think it would be a separate group.
So in this way, it's saying that of, of these nine people, no more than three can be hack members. They still could be some overlap.
I don't think people who sit on the, this board, and I think we just got a comment, you know, from Lisa too, just saying that Richmond utilizes a separate board to manage its housing trust fund. I just think that these should be two separate boards. And so if people are members of the hack committee, they shouldn't be members of the CAF committee.
And I think the only hesitation I had was, are we going to be able to be able to satisfy these, both of, you know, all the categories are needed and not have duplication, but I, we probably can.
But if we can try and then it, oh, go ahead.
I was going to say that, just I, I'll try to make it work and I can come back to you if it doesn't.
Yeah, so that, yeah, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I'm just a little confused because I thought the proposal is having separate hack and separate CAF. And I would agree with those concerns in terms of the CAF committee, but not so much with the, the hack as a body. Just in terms of, I see there, I be, I see there being some value added in terms of the hack of having uh, housing providers be there, just in recognition that, you know, they can't run the show and need accountability. But they're going to be organizations that we have to partner with in order to actually build affordable housing and achieve.
Yeah, and I think, but for the hack part, we're fine with it. I think what we're talking about is specifically the CAF committee, not having.
Okay, well, never mind then. I think I was confused.
And then, and I will say to the being the council representative on the CAF, even when I sat on, I was not a voting member. I just sat and oversaw the process. So ultimately, it comes to council, the recommendation. So I don't, I don't know that we should have a counselor on it. And I was always uncomfortable when I sat on that thing, even if I wasn't voting, just. Michael, have you sat, now you may, they haven't done a cap allocation since you've been on there?
Very unusual because of COVID. I mean, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I see in the documents that some other localities have a council present. You know, I'm open to that, but don't really have strong thoughts on it one way or the other right now, really.
Yeah, it comes before the body as a whole, so I don't think that, but I, I would recommend that the counselor who sits on the hack also is the counselor that sits on the CAF. I mean, I think that's the one seat that it can vote, the membership is on both.
And there'd be a non-voting member for the allocation?
Well, ultimately comes before us anyways. I don't know if that necessarily matters.
I just felt like I didn't want my, at the time, my presence as a counselor weighing in to take and have any undue influence over other members. And so I literally was just there listening and just to observe the process and understand how it was got to. So if it came to council, there was one of us sitting in there. But I, I think I would have been really uncomfortable if I had been um, a voting member. And I think it, it would have affected the, the group. That's my opinion.
Well, people ignore people, so I think it would be fine, but.
Okay.
All right, so where are we? You have to go.
I don't, I don't know that we have to have a counselor on that. I mean, we could always add another category of, of a representative if you wanted to do that. Just the odd number to settle any tie vote.
So we reduce the, or so are we going to do the three, three community members at large versus two? To replace the first category?
So are we saying three staff, three at large? Is that what, that's what I wrote down, but I'm not sure.
Okay. And so can this council member be a non-voting member then?
I think that's fine. If someone would, not, I mean, just going by what Counselor Hill said about feeling uncomfortable in that moment. I mean, that's probably real in, in regards that some might look to a council member to give him a nod. I don't know, but.
Yeah, I don't.
I will say that, I will say that in this particular scenario, if it were three staff and three at large, then any tie votes would come to me to break. I'll take that assignment.
So I think, so we have three, so let's then in, I think, so if there is not a council liaison, what I have found is that people may not show up there. So I think it is important for those discussions for there to be a member of the council on it. And so maybe it can just be written that this person is a non, is a voting member on the hack, but a non-voting member on the CAF. But that that position is, when, when the council person is chosen to sit, they know that they'll be seeing, doing both.
Doing both, okay. That's fine with me.
I just remember that we had tried last year to cut down the number of times that council had to be, councilors had to be on various committees uh, and it, in recognition in part that the number had gotten out of hand. And I, I have my doubts as to how much it would add to the process at this point. I, we're also, I mean, Michael and I are both on the region, I mean, I guess he's the official person. Maybe I'm the alternate on the Regional Housing Partnership. And there, I'm sure are going to be various other things like this uh, that we're, we're going to be called upon to get into the middle of. I, I just wonder whether it's truly a good idea to have council on, on bodies like this.
Michael, do you attend the subcommittee? Well, I guess we just had the conversation. Okay. So Michael, what are your thoughts? So we can know which direction we're going, because we're going to have to.
I don't think, I don't know if it'll matter too much one way or the other. You know, I guess I'm, I'm fine with having, you know, the counselor on the hack, um, be a non-voting member of the, the CAF. But again, quite frankly, I don't really have strong thoughts on it.
My, my comments just stand that like my experience on there, I just, I do feel that it just was not the most, the best kind of situation to have a counselor in the room when those conversations are happening, especially because they're going to be ultimately coming to us.
That's three community, at-large community members, three affordable housing residents and three city staff.
And so the proposal is to have nobody who actually provides housing?
On the funding committee.
Right.
But they will be on the hack, yes.
The, I mean, I would think that that would be one committee where we would particularly want some expertise from providers. We're asking that the CAF committee would set scoring criteria and targeting recommendations for programs funded through the CAF. I mean, uh, who better than, than housing providers and advocates? And then we don't need to have a majority of them. And certainly, there are going to be conflicts that where they would have to recuse themselves. But I really don't think it makes sense to say, we're going to leave the, basically to have the only expert in the room be from the city staff.
Well, one, I would say that you should be able to rely on that expert staff to do that.
I agree. I'm, I'm not faulting that, but that's not, it shouldn't be the only expertise.
No, I'm, I'm adding that the, and the at-large can also be representatives from the, the larger expertise community, I would say. That, that would be how you would get that. You would get it in twofold, because at-large does not just necessarily mean even more residents. It could be a combination of the two.
But we're still, there's a, at least a reasonable likelihood that we end up with nobody who's an expert other than the staff.
So do we want to make that category non-voting members?
Well, the question is, what are they voting on? If they're voting on setting up the criteria, that's fine. If we're, obviously, if they're voting on specific allocations, that's a different matter, but the way that.
This is, this is the out part.
I'm reading the description that says, in addition, the CAF committee will set scoring criteria and targeting recommendations for funding, for programs funded through the CAF and review city staff recommendations for fund awards. The only at the tail end do we actually get to them actually making a decision about funding. Anyway, I, I don't really know what this group is going to do. All I can do is to take a look at, at what has been written.
Yeah.
And it seems to me that there is, uh, there is stuff there for which uh, we would want to have their expertise and not, and that they wouldn't have to be barred from, from voting. I don't know.
And I can see that, I think it's just important if we are going to keep that category, that we are clear that whoever applies for that can't foresee themselves applying for these dollars during their term. Or I, I just think that even if they're on it in the room, it just, this is what created this whole churn before with, when just subcommittee of the hack doing this. Because they felt like there's members of the hack who had undue influence, even if they weren't on the subcommittee. So I do think that a separation is necessary. But I, I understand where Lloyd, you're coming from in terms of just the expertise. I just think that the expertise can't have any kind of conflict with, with the applications.
And it's a. So we can. Yeah, I think on a, because there's no way that our affordable housing providers won't need the resources from the city, from this pot of money. So if they are on here, it's going to be very difficult to say, so you can't award money to yourself. So the only way to avoid that is going to be to leave them out in some way. And so is there, um, okay. So this is the code that was just sent to us from Richmond, just says prohibition on the water grants or loans where board members are involved, no grant or loans from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund may be awarded to persons serving on the board or to other legal entities of which such person is a member of, or which the person has a personal interest as the state or government, um, Conflict of Interest Act defines that term. So based on that, you know, using that and the issues that we've had in the past, I think that it's going to be best. And while we've been having this conversation is to figure out how the funding doesn't occur. What, and there's no way for those individuals to be on there and, because they are going to need the funding more likely than not. They're going to be need, I guess, to be considered for the funding.
Shouldn't, if we just clarify that the hack will have a primary role in terms of developing the criteria for the CAF and the CAF is strictly making the allocations, if that makes sense. Because it seems like developing the criteria is more a policy decision than voting on allocating funds.
Or what about being able to, which they would be able to any, anyway, submit proposals? I mean, some, you know, comment on what they think the scoring criteria should be and target recommendations. But and again, the target recommendations, I don't. Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking back to the city space conversation we had, um, or Water Street, is that Water Street?
I think that's, I think that goes back to the point that I was making in the beginning is that in an advisory capacity, then you're going to receive an advisement on what the appropriate steps to be, council will take. So however we, if we want to move that particular responsibility to the hack, that gives me no heartburn, the hack can actually settle on what the recommendation is for the scoring criteria and let that come before you to, as you're approving the allocation, you're approving that set of criteria, which is going to reset based on whatever the priorities are. I think we can do that.
As long as the public is comfortable that those setting the criteria aren't trying to do it in their own interests or something. I'm just being a devil's, being devil's advocate, because we've been, I've been down this road before because we did have the broader hack set that criteria in the past and there was some of that concern.
And I think what I'm saying is also just continuing to promote the idea that the staff is going to make a recommendation to accompany that. And we're always looking for everyone else's best interest as well.
Okay, so then both, so the hack will be able to make scoring criteria and targeting recommendations, but there will also be a proposal that comes out of CAF. Is that what you're also saying? I think that's going to. Is that what you're all saying? I think that's going to be some very shaky.
No, no, no. He was just saying that staff supporting the hack would ensure that whatever's coming out of the broader hack would, would be reflective of a staff's lens as well, is what I
Understand that, but we've tried that before. I mean, I'm thinking of back to Stacy, you know, like there have been a lot of attempts to do that.
And I think it's part of the thing about this, who's going to kind of both, um, skill set and the level at which this person is brought in, like, yeah, that there, there's, they're received at the table. I think it has a lot to do with just the staff and, and, and I think just what our senior management team kind of partners with them to make sure that they, that they are having their voices heard, and that they feel that they are a partner in this. And I, I agree that historically it hasn't always felt that way. I think we're trying to turn a new page.
So on that. And, yeah. Now I understand that. I hope it works out. So what we're saying now is to set the scoring criteria and targeting recommendations, we're going to move that over from CAF to hack, or we're going to put, they're going to be in both locations. It's going to be
I think you could, it could be revised to say that awarding of funds will be in alignment with the scoring criteria that is set to identify the priorities. So that it, it's working together. Not necessarily repeating any effort. If hack is going to be able to take action to identify what the story, scoring criteria is for this year's CAF based on priorities. Get, um, approval from council on that, and then that information goes to the committee to then consider applications for funding.
Okay. All right, so. To move forward, it's three at-large community members, three affordable housing residents or beneficiaries and three city staff members. And one voting council member or no council member at all.
I prefer no council member, but.
So would I.
And Michael, you still? No.
Don't really have strong opinions to be honest.
All right, so no council member at all. All right. So, were we good to go there?
Yeah, um, and I think what I want to do because of timing, um, is table the task force conversation. I can bring that back later with further conversation and allow our auditors to make their presentation and
Yeah, that's what I was just going to recommend. We can move it. Do you want to move it to twenty three, or do you want to move it to the twentieth?
Uh, oh, twenty-three tonight, uh, all depends on how long that goes. No, um, the twentieth this time, we, we can look at.
But if we cruise through this other thing, could we still just hop onto it?
If you're open to that, I'll happily jump back to it.
Okay.
Yeah, but we probably not as fifteen minutes, and we still have to do public comment.
Oh, it's only fifteen minutes for this thing. Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, so, um, so we'll move to item three, just for the public, there, the discussion for the, um, CDBG home program task force, we're going to, um, come back to that tonight. If we can, or it will be moved to the twentieth, so we'll update you at the, um, six-thirty meeting for which direction we're going with that. And now we're moved to the report. Um, annual comprehensive financial report presentation from auditors and discussion on FY twenty-one year-end results.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm Chris Cullen, City's, uh, Director of Finance. Uh, per state code, the city's auditors are required to present their report on the city's financial statements from the most recently concluded fiscal year to city council prior to the end of the calendar year. Uh, this afternoon, we're joined by Michael Lupton and Matthew McLaren from Robinson Farmer Cox and Associates to present their report for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Uh, Michael and Matthew, welcome, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor Walker, members of council. Um, again, my name is Matt McLaren, and, uh, this is Michael Lupton. We both serve as the, uh, co-partners on the audit for the, uh, city of Charlotte, the fiscal year ending June thirty twenty-twenty-one. Our remarks this afternoon are going to include, uh, two documents. The first is titled the Communication with Those Charged with Governance. Um, this is a letter that is required in professional standards that highlights about seven key points between an auditor and a government body, and I'm going to review that. Um, the second item is the Independent Auditor's Report. Uh, this in summary is the conclusion on the audit of the financial statements, and I will also review that document. At this time, I'm going to review the communication with those charged with governance. Um, again, this is, uh, a written correspondence between an auditor and a government body, but I'm going to communicate that orally to you this afternoon. Uh, there are seven key points, starting with responsibilities under an audit. Uh, just very briefly, um, there are auditor responsibilities and auditive responsibilities. Uh, the auditive is responsible for, um, providing accounting records to be audited, providing a system of internal control and either preparing and or accepting responsibility for that annual financial report. The auditor's responsibilities include testing documents, examining policies and verifying certain accounts, testing controls, and finally, opining on the financial statements as presented. Also disclosed in this letter is communication or accounting principles. Uh, we're required on professional standard to highlight any accounting principles that were implemented for the fiscal year ending June thirty twenty-twenty-one. Um, at this time, we're highlighting Gatsby Statement eighty-four. Gatsby is the oversight body for all governmental accounting pronouncements, uh, Statement number eighty-four dealt with fiduciary activities. Uh, it had a minimal impact to the city, but it was implemented accurately and timely. The next item disclosed in this communication or accounting estimates, uh, just about every financial statement has accounting estimates, including um, the city is no different. The city has accounting estimates related to depreciation lives of fixed assets and also estimates as relates to pension and OPAH liabilities. The fourth item disclosed in this communication revolves around any difficulties encountered before the audit. Please report there were no difficulties encountered in performing the FY twenty-one audit. The next item disclosed is corrected, uncorrected misstatements. Most audits do include some proposed audit adjustments. If those audit adjustments are included in the annual financial report, the audit that financial statements, those are considered corrected misstatements. Any uncorrected misstatements are those that are not included in the report. You require a professional standards to disclose those items. Please report that all proposed audit adjustments were included in the annual financial report, and there were no uncorrected misstatements. The next item is disagreements in applying accounting principles or any other matters during the course of the audit. Please report we had no disagreements with management during the course of the audit. And lastly, this letter talks about consultation with other independent auditors. This is also called opinion shopping. Um, we're not aware that management had any other consultation with another independent audit firm. That wraps up or summarizes the communication with those charged with governance, and I'm going to going to quickly move on to the Independent Auditor's Report. Again, this is the document that's contained in the annual financial report. And if you're following along in that document, it's pages eighteen through twenty, spans the course of three pages. We've issued an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. This is the best report that can be provided to an entity on this audit financial statements. We're also pleased to report that there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses to report, uh, during the course of the audit. That concludes my remarks. At this time, I just want to thank, uh, management and, uh, the Director of Financing Controller for their assistance in this process for the fiscal year in June thirty twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, Michael and Matthew. Uh, Madam Mayor, I apologize. Uh, I just, he referenced the Independent Auditor's Report. Um, I apologize, I verbally, uh, briefed you all on that earlier, but I will make sure I get you hard copies of that total document uh, for your references, but as, as they noted, the, the highlights, uh, it's a, it's a clean opinion with, uh, no, no material findings therein, but I will be sure to get you all a full copy of that for your review. I apologize for that oversight.
Okay. Counselors, and so we, um, may have other questions, but we didn't have it to ask. I don't know if the counselors, um, have it, um, or not. I am interested in just what, um, the change rest, um, that you refer to, um, for Statement eighty-four, and it's in the first document. Could you describe what that is? I just don't understand.
Correct. There, a governmental financial report may include uh, certain types of financial statements called fiduciary activities. These are specific types of funds that are reported in a lot of governmental funds, and, um, this statement changed the format of that presentation for those types of activities, fiduciary fund, financial statements. Uh, most notably for the city, the one change was actually related on the component unit school board. Um, that was related to the student activity fund reporting and how it's reported now actually in the audited annual financial report. Previously, it was a standalone document that was not incorporated in the annual financial statements. And this statement, Mayor, included that into the city's financial report.
Okay. Okay, I've seen that somewhere. Okay, thank you. Counselors, are there any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to clarify, like, so beyond this discussion, we will be discussing like year-end stuff, I guess, at the last meeting of the year. Okay.
Yeah, no, we'll be discussing, starting that now, but they, there are any other questions that you have for the auditors?
Okay, sorry, yeah. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? No. Well, thank you all for, um, joining us, um, this evening, and appreciate so working with city staff.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay. And so with that information, uh, we have completed the, uh, annual comprehensive financial report. Uh, we will be posting a copy of that online to the uh, city's website, specifically in the finance department. Hard copies will be available for anybody who might want one. But, um, pleased to report that we finished, uh, fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. The general fund had a, had surplus revenues of about five point five million dollars. I want to take a few minutes just to kind of walk through the results and kind of how we arrived there. Um, you know, as you're, as you'll recall, when, uh, council was preparing and adopting the FY twenty-one budget, COVID was just beginning uh, in, in the spring, early summer of twenty-twenty, and going into that, you know, we, you know, we were confident that COVID was going to impact our revenues, but we were unsure of, of exactly how, but that are more economically sensitive ones, the most likely uh, vulnerable to changes in the economy and, 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 uh, pandemic, um, measures and shutdowns and so forth, and as we went through the year and as we got to the end of the year, uh, the more economically sensitive revenues, such as personal property tax, meals tax, lodging tax, uh, underperformed, uh, compared to their budget and underperformed to their actual results in the previous, uh, fiscal year. Fortunately though, uh, the city's largest revenue source, which is real estate tax, has performed as well, if not actually a little bit better than expected. And then also sales tax performed better than expected as well. And, you know, that's attributed to, um, the city actually does get, uh, sales tax on online purchases, uh, made within the city. And also just nondiscretionary spending during the pandemic, uh, things like groceries. Uh, people still had to shop for groceries, uh, during the pandemic, and so that helped those two, uh, those two revenue results helped offset, uh, the poor performance of some of our more economically sensitive ones. On the expenditure side, though, we were also under budget as well, which helped again with the revenue picture. Um, several of our larger departments had vacancy savings, uh, through the course of the year, as well as reduced levels of service, um, or closed facilities, uh, during COVID, and that resulted in expenditures being less than expected. I'd also want to point out that the city also received eight point two million dollars of CARES money during the fiscal year. Now, to be clear, the five point five million does not include any CARES money. We account for that in a separate fund outside of the general fund, but what it did allow us to do was, instead of utilizing our general fund dollars to do certain eligible projects or eligible activities, we will use the CARES money instead, so that CARES money stepped in the place of the city's own revenues, and so that certainly helped with the bottom line to, to generate that five point five million that I mentioned. And so staff is planning to bring the year-end appropriation to council, uh, for public year-end first reading on December twentieth. Um, and in addition to a, a handful of housekeeping items, uh, that we need to do to close the fiscal year, we're going to be making two recommendations, which we want to get your, your feedings, uh, feedback and guidance on this afternoon. The first one is, um, as you'll recall, when the FY twenty-one budget was put together back in the, in twenty-twenty, is we did create an economic downturn reserve of about six point seven million dollars of, uh, budgetary capacity by not transferring, uh, cash from the general fund to the capital improvements program. As you know, one of our financial policies that will transfer no less than three percent of the general fund to the CIP. However, given the extraordinary circumstances, uh, that we found ourselves facing, uh, that seemed to be a prudent uh, step to take at that time. And as it turns out, we didn't have to tap into that money, uh, through the course of the fiscal year, and so that six point seven million is outside of the five point five. Um, as I mentioned, it's just that we simply didn't spend that. We didn't transfer it like we would have planned to, and so that six point seven million, we are recommending uh, that that be set, set aside to the CIP contingency fund uh, in recognition that that's where it came from in the first place, that's how we created that, uh, reserve capacity. Uh, we deferred cash-funded projects, uh, for that year, and obviously, as we all know, there are some, there are several large uh, capital needs, both in the upcoming year, but in the five-year plan as well. And so recommend, our first recommendation is going to be to appropriate that, uh, those downturn funds to the CIP contingency. The second recommendation involves the five point five million in surplus revenues, and our recommendation, I should back up before I, before I give the recommendation, I should also point out that our policy, our financial management policy does state that that as well should go to the CIP contingency, although in the past, uh, other uses of those funds have been made for other one-time types of expenses or unforeseen things or opportunities that produced, uh, a return on, uh, return on that investment. Um, that being said, there have been discussions with the mayor and council, city management and leadership, uh, regarding employee compensation and recognition. And so tonight, we're recommending that the five point five million be set aside for, uh, a series of employee compensation adjustments, the first one being a one-time bonus. Uh, thank you for service and dedication and essential work performed during what's been a difficult year uh, for work already performed during the past calendar year. The second one is, uh, a mid-year market adjustment to acknowledge, uh, the challenges and our competition in the local labor market to make sure we can retain and attract the most qualified, uh, candidates and retain our employees uh, to do the essential work that they have been doing and need to continue to do. And then finally, uh, this isn't a, a dollars and cents recommendation, but also just, um, an update on the class and compensation study to address the more, uh, long-term systemic, uh, compensation challenges that we had, that we face as an organization. So sort of a, uh, uh, a, a thank you for work already completed, a short-term adjustment, acknowledging some current market realities, and then again, a longer-term, uh, more strategic look at how we do compensation. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sanders and Ms. Marshall, and they can walk you through the details a little bit.
And can I just, um, before I forget? But I do want to just for staff to ponder the, um, six point seven million transfer, especially with the infrastructure bill that was passed, and that money may be coming for some of those projects, and I know we don't know the amount that localities will get from it, but based on, um, the poverty rate before and what will happen to the majority of people who were in poverty, that that will probably be a deeper level of poverty coming out. I don't know if CIP is where we should be considering allocating that with the fact that there may be funding coming in the future, and I just didn't want to lose that thought before I finish it, but I want to talk about it more later.
We also have a seventy-five million dollar project out on the horizon that I think that any, any contributions we can put into the CIP right now, I think, are, are going to be needed, and, um, if we're going to be able to do any of our other priorities. And again, this is where those funds were intended to be in the fiscal year when this pandemic began. And we took it from there.
Or didn't transfer it to there. But what I'm saying is, and I've been saying this the whole time with the school reconfiguration project, something that cannot Something that cannot solve all of the issues that we have. Schools, as fabulous as we want to believe that they are, we are arriving at this current place that we are with the current. Um situations that we have with our public. One of the primary focus, I think, is to make sure that families don't. Um are not in deeper levels of poverty, but since then they were before the pandemic. Because then it won't matter what the fancy schools look like, because you're going to have people showing up and they're not going to be in a position to learn. Um and so I just think we should be more strategic. And that was the original thought of why this may not happen, because there may be greater needs, and I don't think that we've stretched ourselves to think about what those needs are. To make sure that families are as healthy as possible leaving out of this pandemic, which we're still very much in. Sorry for interjecting, but I didn't want to forget about.
Well, ma'am, if there's any further questions that you have, um our director of finance did a wonderful job of really covering. Um the suggestions that staff has come up uh with for uh council's consideration. And um if there's any uh details that um council would like additional information on, we are happy to provide that. But um really, the focus is that that thank you bonus is key towards uh work that has already been completed by our staff through twenty twenty-one. Um and so that allowed us to ensure that more individuals were able to be um provided with a amount. And then the um point six uh percent mid-year market increases in a recog- recognition. Of the cost of living inflation um and other things that are going around. Uh that make even everyday things like milk and eggs more expensive, and we recognize that.
And so will this come before us in a more formal way? So this is just kind of teeing this up. Okay.
Correct.
I was thinking that we were going to see the current proposal. We're not going to see that, ma'am.
Yeah, we need the chart.
Yeah.
Chart that spells out the the size of the bonus, because it's a thirty-five hundred dollar bonus sliding scale based on hours reported. For eleven months of the year.
Yeah, that's been my holdup all weekend, where I think I may have a question. I'm not sure if I have a question, because I just don't remember the inside of the thing. But if you are saying that it's clear, then okay, then maybe I don't. I I was happy with what was presented during the meeting, so I think. But it would help me to be able to see it to make sure I don't have any questions at the last minute.
I have the chart if if I can share it.
That's fine. Are you seeing it?
I'm trying. Let's see if this works. Are you able to see it?
Yes. It's not full screen, though.
The edges cut off just a little bit, Chrissy. Much better, thank you. So, Mayor, this is the chart that um we provided you and other council members uh for consideration of this proposal. And what you'll see at the very top, that breakdown table provides the reported hours, how we broke those down and the percentage of bonus. Uh that would be allocated in that amount. The maximum amount for any team member uh who worked. One thousand eighty-eight hours or above and has not received a bonus already will be three thousand five hundred dollars. The chart that is second on this page is important, because we also wanted to make sure that we recognized our temporary season returning retirees. And so that ensures that the majority of those individuals who have provided us with more than six point nine hours will receive recognition. And a thank you for the work that they have already completed through November twenty-sixth. The other key chart that we showed you all, perceive you in mind scrolling, is on just in consideration of. Our sworn fire police and sheriff um deputies. Do you see Chrissy is mousing over it, so you can bring your attention to it. They are all eligible to receive um up to three thousand five hundred dollars. Or the difference between what was previous previously received and that amount. This was to ensure that individuals did not um feel as if they were um being forgotten. But also that individuals did not receive double the amount, um which could happen with certain individuals who may be um caught or supported. For example, and had received a bonus from the state, but every um nearly every employee outside of eighteen will walk away with. Um some funding as a thank you from the city for their hard work and dedication during what. Uh we hoped would be a less complicated year, but continues to be complicated, thanks to various uh reasons, notwithstanding Omicron.
Yes, and I couldn't remember in, you know, when I was trying whether he said the. Percentage was different, and that's what I was, the email that I sent over the weekend, that's what I was thinking. That maybe it was, but this is not, so that's the response you all gave, and now I can see it, and that's all that needed to happen. So I was just from, I was misremembering the chart, the lower categories, or not remember them clearly, and that's why I was asking what they were saying, but this is. Yeah, what we talked about.
Madam Mayor, you have had a lot of sheets of paper across your desk recently, so we completely understand.
Okay. Counselors, are there any other um questions here?
I just wanted to clarify it for the public, so that obviously we were just laying out the dollar amounts to go towards a bonus, but we'll also be leveraging some of that five point five. As kind of planting the seed for that mid-year pay increase. Um and then obviously, that's something that we'll be doing in perpetuity, because we have to maintain um those dollars on the operational side, so. The this these dollars are allowing us to kind of do both simultaneously.
Right, so the bonus is though, there's a cost, the price tag of right at three million dollars, and then there's another two point five roughly. Uh is what it takes to do the six percent market adjustment, which the plan is to make it effective in January. So this would be um immediate uh relief to folks seeing an increase in pay beginning January twenty-two. And then we are already looking forward to how do we sustain this for going forward and feel comfortable that the projections uh for revenues. Are such that we can sustain this uh as a permanent increase.
And did you have to see if we could vote on this sooner than, so the second reading wasn't January sixth?
So I did get um language. I need to finish reading it um in regards to how many days have to go in between. It's based on the size of uh the appropriation, I believe, that dictates how many days were required. So we'll be able to take a look at that in the morning, because I did get that later today, and we need to dig into that to find out if we can move faster.
Okay.
One other thing I'm going to add regarding the bonus, we are also going to explore any opportunities to reimburse ourselves using American Rescue Plan. Monies under the premium pay uh that might be eligible as well to further leverage those dollars. And potentially free up any of these other dollars to be used either for the six percent, or if we actually do have uh funds left over, we'll certainly come back to council. Uh with suggestions for those.
Yeah. Okay, no, I think um, well, not think, but this is good, and I hope staff um. You know, understands that even though things have been um. Really challenging, that we do appreciate the work that they do and um the effort, even with all of everything that's been going on. For them to continue to make sure that the city continue to run and um. The effort that they puts in shows that it's not a one person, it's not an upper management, that it takes all of us, and I think that they do um. You know, continue to show up and do a good job, and I see people in the morning sometime when I'm um out. And walk across the bridge to come to work and, you know, you just see it, so I hope that the. Just a reminder that we do try to make sure that when we can um say thank you. And I hope they consider this a worthy thank you.
And if I could, because I know that the the there will be a lot of conversation going on for the rest of tonight and throughout the building tomorrow. We have been working feverishly on trying to pull this plan together. We will continue to do that work to be able to roll out details. So that we can inform the staff exactly how this will work and how it will impact them, so there won't be questions. And ideally, we'll try to do that as soon as possible. The question you posed, Mayor, on how soon we can consider it will be. The sticking point for the moment, because we just have to figure out how quickly we can make that happen to be able to come out with that rollout information that I'm sure they'll be seeking very soon.
And Madam Mayor, I do just want to recognize uh two team members who are not with us this evening, Chris Bado. In our human resources department and Brian Ray in the budget office, they were integral employing together the. The information and that and that chart that Chrissy shared took uh many, many hours of a manual analysis to to get us where we. Where we needed to be in terms of the of the breakdown, so I just wanted to acknowledge the contrib- the contribution and time of those two gentlemen.
I told Brian thank you last week, but um, Chris, thank you too. Appreciate all the effort, all the staff members that you all two put in, put into this, and it was. Um you did really good work in a short amount of time, so thank you.
Echo those thanks.
All right, any other questions, councilors, your thoughts? No, okay. Well, thanks staff again for um. Um for your work on this, and again, for the um. Public, just before we go to public comment, we will either move discussion to the um CDVG task force to either later tonight. And we'll announce that at six thirty timeframe or on the twentieth. Um so if you're on here for that, we're sorry that we didn't get through to it during this session. And um we'll open it up for um public comment at this time. Who do we have, Mr. Rice or Ms. Parks?
No, you have me. Um right now, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay.
Oh, one just popped up. First up, we have Brandon Collins.
Uh good evening, City Council. I know you got a long day ahead of you. Um appreciate the conversation. Uh I did want to just put in. A quick plug, um I've been a big fan of the hack, um and there's a lot of expertise in this community. Um and I and I really hope you can continue to rely on the expertise. Um I did want to uh raise a question. It was pretty much decided, but uh CRHA uh is your uh housing arm for the city of Charlottesville. And I think over the past few years has shown that it is increasingly more uh capable. Of meeting those needs and and actually fairly unique in meeting the most ambitious goals um for affordable housing in this community, so. Uh I want you all to keep that in mind as you move forward, but also to consider that CRHA should probably have a permanent. Uh place on the hack uh moving forward. Um it doesn't exclude them from being able to seek funding. Um but I think uh since it is your arm for housing uh wants to be that arm. Uh and I think you all want to see that happen and have that ability um that you should uh make sure that CRHA is is deeply included. Uh on the hack, and that's all.
Thank you, um Brandon.
Um next up, we have Richard Allen. Hi, Richard, embarrassed?
Can you hear me, councilors?
Yes.
Thank you. This is my first time before you, and I apologize if I was a bit confused as to timing. My name is Richard Allen. I'm a professional iconographer. And that means I've spent a career studying the public function of civic symbolism. Last July, you councilors were praised by people worldwide. You oversaw removal of a century-old statues that honored slavery, that that honored Indian extermination. This was a truth-telling moment for Charlotte'sville. I'm here to ask you to continue that by honoring the contribution of enslaved ancestors who built our town. And you're halfway there. You have tasked the Historic Resources Committee memorialize the slave block site. For over two decades, there's been no visible notice there acknowledging enslavement history. But next to that, that will change. The HRC plans to what they call go big. With an extensive redesign of Court Square historic signage. My citizen advocacy group supports this. Two parking spaces presently obstruct visual access to this center of Charlottesville. Where human beings once were sold. Last month, I met with city engineer Brennan Duncan, and he made an eyes-on inspection of this issue. He informed us that the two parking spaces can be moved across the street just west of five hundred fourth square's entry door. All he needs is you're okay. And our group respectfully asks that you give that promptly. We ask that you place this request on your agenda for next meeting and discussion. And that you direct new public works director Stacy Smalls to relocate the problematic pair of parking places. What can our citizen group do to further encourage this action? On behalf of hundreds of concerned citizens, thank you for creating unobstructed visual access to the HRC's. Memorial of the slave block. And I'll just add that it has been very, very enlightening to see the hard work that you and staff are constantly engaged in. And I want to personally salute all of you and thank you for serving our community in such a fine way.
Thank you.
At this time, I don't see any other hands raised. If you would like to make comment at this time, now is your time to do so. Just hit the raise hand icon on your screen or star nine if you're calling in by telephone.
Okay, looks like we're good to go. So I'll close the public comment. Period, and um I'll bring the comment that Brandon um. Raised, I I would like to explore that um more. I know that the relationship with the city and CRHA hasn't been for a long time what I thought it should be. And so I am interested in that conversation, but um I know that once you start opening things up. Like that, then everybody will make their pitch for why it should be them too, so um I just want to acknowledge that, but I want to. I I heard the question. Any other comments um at this time? All right, um so we are going to now go into um closed session. And um councillor Hill, do you have the motion?
Yes, pursuant to section two point two thirty-seven twelve of the Virginia Code, I hereby move that the city council closes open meeting and convene. Within a closed meeting as authorized by Virginia Code, section two point two thirty-seven eleven A one and A eight for the purposes of discussion and consideration of the apartment appointment of individuals. To city boards or commissions and for consultation with legal counsel regarding disposition of statutes and or contracting for city management services.
Second.
Ms. Thomas?
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Councillor Hill?
Yes.
Councillor Payne? We couldn't hear you. I can see, okay, he says yes. Uh councillor Snook?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, so that.
When we come back, we come to a different meeting.
Different link.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you all for joining us.